I'd like to call the public hearing on the Solar and Wind Energy Systems Law, proposed local law, on June 11th, 2019. Please rise and we'll pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please concede it. Okay, at this time, the town clerk will read the legal notice.
Please take notice that the Town of Clinton will hold open for continued comment. The public hearing on proposed local law number two of 2019 entitled Solar and Wind Energy Systems Law pursuant to Article 16 of the New York Town Law on Tuesday, June 11th, 2019, at the Town of Clinton Town Hall, 1215 Center Road, Reinbeck, in the Town of Clinton, New York, at 6:15 PM prevailing time, or as soon thereafter as the matter is reached on the agenda. This local law will take effect immediately upon filing with the Secretary of State. Complete copies of the proposed local law are available at the Town of Clinton Clerk's office for inspection during regular business hours. All interested persons and citizens shall have an opportunity to be heard on said proposal at the date, time, and place aforesaid.
Okay, you've heard that. So, at this time, I open the floor for public comments. The deal is, you can go over there by the microphone, say your name. We'd prefer you, just where you are, you don't give me a house.
Just for the solar.
Yeah, just for solar thing.
So, Eli and I got a email earlier. I don't know if you saw the email from John. He emailed both of us. I didn't print it out.
Oh, John, yeah, I did, yes, I'm sorry.
So, here's his comments on the solar. So, John Colagero, who's on the Zoning Board of Appeals, and also served on the Zoning Revision Committee with Eli and I, originally attacked the solar law and created what is currently on the books. So, here's John's comments. He couldn't make it tonight. "The zoning review committee, which was comprised of a broad-based group of Clinton citizens and assisted by the town planner, addressed the solar issue at great length and reached a set of guidelines which represented, at least in part, all of the parties interested in this issue. I'm not sure why that work is now being considered, but for what is being represented in Tier One and Tier Two, the nuts and bolts are not appreciately different. The issue for me is in Tier Three. We wrestled with the basic concept of solar farms, and no one present at the Town Board meeting included but get around the intrinsic idea that the producing of power way beyond the amount needed for personal use and the selling of the power to someone else, being a neighbor or a company representing a commercial use. Please note that the group was in no way opposed to clean solar power, but had and acknowledged the fact. With that in mind, saying in harmony with the comprehensive plan, that type of installation was restricted to areas of Clinton zone for commercial use. What is proposed in this law would allow for anyone with 10 or more acres to operate such an installation. The law covers screening, setbacks, glare, safety, and so on, all good. What seems to be missing is that, like the event center proposal, you are advocating or allowing commercial use in residential zones. No amount of requirements or safety concerns should change this basic fact. While expanding solar is admirable, an agenda-driven law may have far-reaching consequences. First and foremost, this is a blow to the concept of zoning, which has served the town pretty well since 1971. It has kept the town's open space as hoped. Development has been measured and tasteful. It has had provided the town with some tools to monitor properties and maintain some standards. Allowing this change of use opens the door to a number of challenges. If this commercial use is allowed, why not others? There are many property owners who would like to be able to operate some business or other type of business out of their home, which is not permitted under home occupation. How could the town defend a challenge by a potential self-storage facility or even contractor's yard? We prefer solar over storage is not going to cut it in court. What mechanisms are you putting in place to see that tax assessments are adjusted? Surety of a property that can generate substantial revenues would have to be assessed as such, and the neighboring property owners and the rest of the town, for that matter, do not wind up subsidizing these businesses. Final thought is that it is admirable to ask for minimal clearing of trees for these installations. You're potentially covering large areas of land and changing the habitat in many ways. I would hope that the first consideration would be given to tracks that perhaps were cleared for other purposes long ago. I'm not, I'm in no way in the area but hope that it is gained in greenhouse gas improvements, not lost in negative environmental impact. I apologize, my phone is almost dead and it dimmed on me and I can't read it that well. But, that was from John. So, I figured I'd read that and get it out of the way.
Can you forward that to me, so I can see it first?
Sure. My phone is live.
Yeah. Okay, anyone from the audience? We're just having comments, we're not having debates or anything at this point.
Sure. Art.
Hi, Art Pasqua with Deer Hill Road, Silver Lake. A lot of my concerns were just read to the board and to the audience here. A couple of things that I think we should think about. In my opinion, this is spot zoning, and I'm not happy about spot zoning. Commercial uses in residential areas, I think, open a Pandora's box. I'm sure there'll be other people that'll voice their opinion on that, but that's just my personal opinion. One of the things that maybe in this law, or in researching the law, that we should look at the potential build-out that could occur. I know we did it on the planning board many years ago, and I can't remember exactly the reason why we did it, but what's the build-out? There are plenty of 10-acre-plus lots in the Town of Clinton, and a lot of them are vacant or they're, as in my own case, I have 10, 20 acres of open land and forested land. I think we should take a look at it. It's not that hard to do. I'm sure we're not going to get 100% build-out, but it would give us an idea of what could He mentioned land values, taxes, and I know some other people are going to be bringing that up. It's not my expertise, but I think that's something to look at, and the decommissioning and bonding, which I don't understand at all, the financial part of that, I think should be made very, very clear, because I don't think the town would have resources to do the decommissioning if, say, a company went bankrupt and the bonding company went bankrupt. Who knows? I really don't know that much about that subject, but, and that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Next person. Just feel free. Yeah, come on up. We got room for another one.
I'm Jack Ospitz, I live on.
Go round to the microphone, so people can hear you.
I'm Jack Ospitz, I live on Fiddler's Bridge Road, and my phone is, sorry about that. I agree with Art's general concerns about spot zoning. I do want to thank Mike Witten and the Town Board for listening to the planning board's views on this and for making some suggestions, for making some changes to the resolution, which I think greatly improve it in terms of acreage and height limitations and things of that sort. It does resolve the concerns that had been expressed by the prior two speakers, but I think that goes a long way. The one specific point I wanted to make is that if the Town Board does adopt this, I think it should also opt out of Section 487 of the Real Property Law. That section gives an automatic 15-year exemption from any increase in property values due to the solar system, from local taxes. So unless the town opts out, any increase in value is going to be received entirely by the property owners without any corresponding tax benefit to the town. I think that should not happen. And finally, I'd just like to urge that this be read, proofread, very, very carefully. There was at least one instance in the version that I read yesterday, I don't know if it's been corrected in this one, but instead of perennial vegetation, it referred to perennial vegetation, which would be very hard for the planning board to modify.
Ray, can I just raise a question? I'm curious, if the property values increased, doesn't that benefit the town in terms of tax base?
No.
No, no, this is specific card that says for 15 years, the town can't tax the increase in value that's due to the solar system.
Oh, specifically for solar?
Specifically for solar.
Okay, all right, got it, okay.
Good evening, good evening, Board. Chris Giuliano, Center Road. After, I'm going to agree, I guess go over what John Colagero said, I got the liberty to work with John, Dean, and Elliot, and a few others, which was a pretty good synopsis of our town, you know, different walks of life, and work on the initial solar law. When we sat and worked on that, we were tasked, and it was a grueling project, I think I learned more about solar in those months. With that, with that said, I'm 100% for solar, for clean energy. I want that to be on the record. I think my only concern is where, when we sat down to work on this, I think we came to consensus with probably the seven of us that were on the board, that, you know, we were trying to, you know, the comprehensive plan, and I get it, that's fairly old, and things kind of change over time with that. But what we have seen is, yes, there are certain things that changed, but one thing that I think we all agreed upon was, and a few of us were totally against, and one of the people, if I remember right, and this is my question to Elliot, what was the change? I'm just asking this as a question, from going from when we sat down in the Zoning Revision Committee to where we were all on board, and I think you were very strong about even having ground source or certain size and setbacks and greenery or shrubs and everything else put around, to where we are now. That's a question, but my other point, I do agree with Art, and I'm sorry, you're?
Jack.
Jack, with this, I think we should look into the tax issue here, because if we're going to start limiting, we're given a 15-year, if that's potentially what it is, and I'm not 100% sure, but I'm going to take your word that you've read that, 15 years of holding property taxes at a residential rate, and I think I'm going to be going back through what I said the other day in the hearing regarding having facilities for weddings and everything else, that we got to get a benefit as a town out of this. Right now, we see a few different things happening. One is, if we have this happen, we're going to start seeing these mass sections of our properties, or our town, for that matter, basically looking something out of Star Trek. Is that something that we want here? And then if so, then what would the benefit be not? When I say to the town, it's to the people, our residents. What are the residents going to get out of that? If they're not going to get, if these other people are going to get a tax break, and they're going to get either hold on their tax numbers on what they're being charged at for assessments, basically, we're going to start subsidizing, because the tax levy starts getting broken across all of us for that. It's kind of like when we take land easements, for matter of fact, then they come off the record for the town for charging taxes, our tax levies get changed on our houses, so we end up paying more for that. And that's an issue that we really have to look into, kind of going back for the events as well.
You're talking to us.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm talking in general here. So I think we really need to start looking at that fact on how we can, either if we're, if this is going to go through, and right now, I get the vibe that it is going to go through, at least try to protect us property owners from having to subsidize, you know, tax breaks for these solar farms, when they are making money on that. And, you know, as far as commercial, I'm not sure with the tax law, how that New York State says that. I think it's something we need to look into a little bit more. I'm going to hold my comments until the rest of the evening. Thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and not to be neglected, Russ.
Well, first, Russ Tompkins, first I apologize, because I didn't get this in time to review the whole thing. So, these gentlemen have just been talking about Tier Three, and I'm looking here and it says, "are systems that are not included in Tier One and Tier Two." But, I mean, Tier One and Tier Two sound like you're generating electricity for your own use at your home. Tier Three, it sounds like they're using the word solar farm, maybe that's further in here, but it's kind of vague, it's not Tier One, it's not Tier Two, so it's Tier Three. I mean, I don't know what there's requirements on it, so I'm a little vague on that, but I'm just going to comment on a few things I saw quickly in looking through this. On page five, where you got Height C, it refers to Appendix Three. "All roof-mounted solar energy systems shall comply with a height set forth in Appendix Three." And if I look correctly at Appendix Three, Appendix Three is for Tier Two. So, roof-mounted is Tier One, and maybe I'm confused here, but I'm looking at, it says, under Appendix.
You may have an older one, because Table Three has Tier One, flat roof, Tier One, pitched roof, Tier Two, and Tier Three.
Well, I'm looking at Appendix, well, maybe, Appendix Three, Heights Three requirements.
Oh.
Appendix Four. Flip over to the next page.
Apparently, the top, maybe Appendix Three is referring to the following page, Table Three.
Appendix Four.
No, no, Appendix Four. They just got printed on the wrong page. That's Appendix Four right there. This is Three.
This is Three.
Appendix Three, Height Three.
Appendix Three, Table Three, yeah.
Apparently, under Appendix Three is Table Three.
Yeah.
So, maybe it should say Table Three instead of Appendix Three.
He was saying it was just a printing error, that it shifted up.
I think Table Three is part of Appendix Three anyway. So, in Table Three, it says the height of the systems will be measured.
I don't think it printed like it showed on the screen.
The height of the systems will be measured from the height, from the highest natural grade below each solar panel. Grade to me means ground. I don't know what you meant by grade. Maybe the height is, maybe you're talking about pitch of the roof?
Yeah.
I don't know what the natural grade is.
Well, I don't think you're going to be doing a Tier Three on the roof.
No, it's not Tier Three. This just says all roof-mounted, okay? And we're looking at Table Three, which has so many inches, a flat roof, tiered roof, 12 inches, but above it, it says, "the height of the systems will be measured from the highest natural grade below each solar panel."
That's the top of the page, very top of the page.
So, that applies to Tier Two and Tier Three. I'll make it more clear that that statement doesn't apply to Tier One, because those would be roof-mounted.
Okay, and on Page Six, you've got down here setbacks for Tier Two. Tier Two, to me, means ground-based system. Shall comply with setbacks forth in Appendix Two. If you look at Appendix Two, it says the setback, for instance, I'm looking at Hamlet. Front setback 300 feet. Hamlet is a 1-acre zone, and a 1 acre is 43,560 square feet. If you took the square root of that, assuming you've got a square, it's only like 208 feet, 208 by 208. So, there's no way possibly you could have a 300-foot setback in a Hamlet if you wanted a ground-based.
Yeah, I mean, the current law doesn't allow any in the front yard, so in the Hamlet, since it'd be so small, you wouldn't, you would likely not be able to have one in your front yard, but you could have one in the back or on the side.
Yeah, but there's no way you would have 300 foot in width. The maximum you would have, if it was square, would be 208 feet square.
You're assuming that all the lots in the Hamlets are small, which most of them are. There are, there is an exception where there's 20-acre parcels.
But I'm saying, if you had an existing lot, which is allowed, 1 acre, there's no way you could put any roof or floor, ground-based solar system anywhere.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Well, I mean, I'm looking at my lot, and if it was clear in the back, it'd be out of the view of the people, because the house would be blocking it, but there's no way you could do it, because there's no way you've got 300 feet. I think that's, I think it's excessive, 300 feet setback. See, I, like I said, I apologize, because I got this late and I didn't have a chance to look at other things. Let's see if I just got anything else noted here. I think not, but the Tier Three, the way it sounds like the people here are talking is that it would be a solar farm. And I don't, I don't know, this Tier Three just says, "not included in Tier One and Tier Two." So I don't know if the definition is succinct enough to say what Tier Three is meant to be here. Is it covered somewhere further in?
Yeah, I think as you read the limitations on it, and the size of limitations on it, you'll see that it is essentially solar farms.
Okay, well, like I say, I apologize, because I didn't, I didn't look at things, but I'm, I'm thinking if a person had a 1-acre parcel in the Hamlet and wanted to put some ground-mounted solar panels, that it shouldn't be, because you don't have a 300-foot setback, that it should be excluded.
Well, currently, they can't do anything in the front. So, I mean, it's more restrictive currently for people in the Hamlets than what this would.
Yeah, well, I mean, if you go down, it's not in the Town of Clinton, but if you go down White Schoolhouse Road, and if you go, if you go down Slate Creek Road, White Schoolhouse goes to the right, just a short ways up, there's a house on the left with two solar panels out there in his field alongside the house. It's probably not 50 feet from the road. I don't find it obtrusive at all, those panels there, and I would think that somebody in our town should be able to have the same ability to put something like that up.
I mean, I remember originally when we were, and Elliot can confirm this, is that the reason we originally even talked about having a solar law was the fact that there was complaints about people putting solar panels in the front yard. And so, the way it was written, it doesn't say you couldn't do it, it says that it was not the preferred area. The preferred area was always behind the house, second area would be on the side lot. Didn't say you couldn't do it, it just said.
It said that it had to be behind the front line of the principal building.
Right, or you have to get a variance.
Or you have to get a variance, so, I mean, that's saying that you can't do it unless you get a variance.
Again, you know, the original reason that we even started talking about solar law was because of two in particular properties that had put them in the front yard, and neighbors were complaining. And we had no law to say that you couldn't, or you couldn't do anything. So that's why it was originally written that way, and I think in harmony of what our work was, was not to have it in the front yard.
Yeah.
Unless, again, there are exceptions, like if someone has a flag lot, and their house is 500 feet from the road, and so the front of their yard is actually 500 feet back, it's really not going to be obtrusive to somebody.
There's a property right across the street from where we're sitting now, where the house is.
Right. So having it in a front yard is.
Way back.
Way, way back. I think what we're talking about is the normal front yard, where that's where the house is.
Yeah.
Okay, we've got another one.
Ray Rivard, Nine Partners Road. Frog in my throat tonight. I also haven't read through this, and I apologize for that, so I'm just gonna, I will read through it and get back to you, but I want to give you a couple of comments about my experience up in Cherry Valley, New York. I moved up there and bought a small farm. The town had no zoning whatsoever. Went to sell my house, half of the potential buyers would not even come and look, because they knew there was going to be industrial-grade wind turbines up on the hill. Are we talking about industrial-grade here, or small, personal-type wind turbines? Two very different things.
I don't think it limits it. There's a lot of limitations, but it doesn't specifically say you couldn't.
What they wanted to put in Cherry Valley were industrial-grade wind turbines, roughly three-quarters of a mile from my house up on the hill. Half of my potential buyers called up and said, "I don't even want to look at it, because I don't want to live near wind turbines." It totally divided the town. Neighbor hated neighbor. It was the most awful experience that I went through in my life. So we really, you've got, I, we've got to have zoning. You've got to describe these things in zoning, but you've got to be very careful with industrial-grade, which are like 300 feet tall, versus personal turbines, which are a lot smaller, but you need a lot of room for a personal turbine, too. Has anybody ever seen one?
The commercial?
Not the commercial, the smaller ones?
I've seen some so small that they're like little cans.
The ones they sell, of course, they're all from China, that's one thing. They have blades maybe 40 feet long. You wouldn't want, you wouldn't want to live next to one.
That's a more commercial one.
So, in writing this, in writing this, I tried to respect what was already on the books, and I pretty much didn't change the wind portion of it at all. This is what's been on the book since 2015.
So I need to go back.
And the way that that one was written, I suspect, was so that it would never, we'd never have a wind turbine in town. It was written in such a way that it would, you'd have to have your wind turbine on top of the ridge line, and our zoning makes it so that we wouldn't be able to have a wind turbine on the ridge line. So I don't think it's necessarily a concern. I don't think we've ever had an application for a windmill.
We've had two windmills in town over my lifetime, and none of them survived more than about two years, because it was just a waste of time.
Generally, the big wind companies will only come in if there's no zoning at all.
Yeah.
And that's pretty much upstate, Otsego County, Schuylkill County.
We don't have sufficient wind here to make it justifiable, in general.
I know. So I will go back and review this and get back to you with more comments.
I think we also had, didn't we have a 35-feet height limit? Which basically made them impractical for most purposes, for wind, for wind turbines, I think 35 feet was the highest they could be.
Even the small ones are going to be taller than that.
Yeah, maybe I'm admitting more than I should, but I was just trying to respect what had been done in the past. I'd happily cut the wind portion of this. I just kept what was there.
Well, the reality is that nobody wanted a commercial-grade wind.
Yeah.
And the only place to really have it is in the ridge line, so it was written that you weren't going to do it, unless it was a little homemade, you know, generator for, like a trickle charge.
I'll review this and get back to you with more comments.
Thanks.
I'd like to just call for a quick point in the new legislation.
You got to come up to this stage.
On Page 17, it says, "The primary purpose of any wind energy facility shall be to provide power for the principal use of the lot on which it's located, and not for generation of power for commercial purposes."
That's right.
So it does seem to be a, pretty clearly, an individual rather than a large commercial operation.
That's right.
Anyone else? Oh, the other.
Rich Morse from Hollow Road. Just a comment on the turbines. As I said last month, we luckily are on the leeward side of the Catskills. We don't get enough wind here for a wind turbine, so that really isn't, isn't an issue. And the way the law is written, for the smaller ones, for, such as a farm might use, or, they're really restricted and they're excellent, so that part of the law, nobody wants to see those big turbines, and it's written, so we aren't going to have them. That's good. I'm really also glad to hear so many people speaking positively about solar energy, and I don't. And I don't, um, part of it, though, I, I don't quite get because we keep questioning, what's the benefit to the town? Well, let me suggest the benefit, or the detriment, rather, to the town if we don't do something. We right now are getting big power lines going through, and we're going to keep getting big power lines going through if we're going to continue to rely on these massive generation plants that are out of the area. It was calculated by frankly, somebody who is not a professional in this, but somebody who's quite clever and whose opinions I trust, that it would only take for ten-acre solar farms to power all of Clinton. Now imagine that, if each town would just do that, we could get rid of these lousy overhead lines. And ten acres, four ten-acre lots, we could easily do and hide with proper shrubbery, which this law puts in there, you know? I do want to, I do want to comment on the solar installation on nine G that brought up so many complaints. And rightly so. And I want to say how quickly the town responded to a problem, and we can in the future. If this law creates a problem, there is nothing that says this group can't get together and solve a problem. But you're not going to have a problem if you don't do anything. And we aren't going to have a solution to burning fossil fuels if we don't do anything. We need to get off of fossil fuels. We all know that. So throwing roadblocks in a law isn't going to help us there. And I think there's a lot of merit to this law. If it needs some tweaks down the road, so be it. Bring it on, and let's all get together and change it. But I think this is something that we all really should get behind and support. The idea that this is a commercial enterprise is kind of interesting. I think Dean, you brought that up at the last month's meeting, and I thought about it this, this past month. The only place that a solar farm can be is on land that could be agriculture. There is no farm that is not commercial. The only farm that becomes not commercial is a development. And that's what we're trying to avoid here. Having commercial solar farms on land that is, it may not be in the ag district, but it could be, and it could be a farm. So we're talking about land that has, that is really used commercially. So as we expand what farms can do, such as we've been talking about the weddings and that type of thing, solar farms have, there's a lot of logic to put them there. But again, you know, we can just end everything, hammer it down, and end up staying on fossil fuels. And I would suggest, folks, that what we try and do here is come up, get something in place. This law to me seems that in, for most all respects, it makes a lot of sense. And if there's a problem, we can get together quickly and nip it in the bud. And I strongly ask for the support of this law. Thank you.
Now, Rich, you, you know that those power lines are, are, are there mostly to make up for the loss of energy that New York City's got. And so most of the power is going to New York City.
That's right.
So those power lines, those power lines will always be there because New York City doesn't have the ability.
That's right. We can't take those down. But we can do our part, and other towns can do their part, so we don't need more.
Well, that's true.
You know, and that's, that's what I'm saying. You know, we.
But I didn't want anybody to have a misconception that those power lines are going to come down.
I'm not so sure, though, that you're right, Dean. If you take the acreage of the roofs in New York City.
I'm not saying they couldn't do it, but they're not.
You put solar panel on there, and by golly, you could see those lines becoming so expensive they aren't worth maintaining.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so I agree, it would be sort of an idealistic thing, it's something that I would love to see, but it probably won't happen, but it could happen, Dean. I'm gonna.
There's a lot of things that could happen.
I'm going to challenge it.
Hey, Richard, I'm, I'm curious about this, he's talking about four ten-acre lots. How would you implement something like that? How are other towns doing it?
That I don't know. That's, I, I, I don't know it, but I know if it can be done, we should.
Does the town actually pay to have the panel buy the land, have it paid to have the town?
You know, one thing that, that could happen, I mean, there are a lot of things that could happen. There, there could be little co-ops on the farms, and people could buy into them. You know, we buy our electricity through a solar company. I don't know exactly how it works, but we, we do that. We could do that locally. I don't know where in the world the solar farm is that, that we're getting our electricity from, and probably is an oil generator somewhere, I don't know. But I really do believe it is a solar farm somewhere, but I don't know where, but it would be nice if we could do that locally. Now, the other thing is, too, that, that when somebody was, was worried about these being huge things, if they get to a certain point, central housing isn't going to accept them, you know? So there's an issue there, too. It's like the wind towers. There are built-in constraints on this. There is a number, the ten-acre lot is, is, is kind of a key number, everything has sort of key numbers. You go bigger than ten acres, and you can't just dump it into the three-phase lines. So, and also, there's only so many places in town that we have three phases. You can't just dump it into the regular electricity. It has to go into a three-phase system. So there's a lot of constraints here. But it's a fabulous law, it's a fabulous start to something that I would love to see Clinton. Yeah, be a leader in something here that, that, it's exciting. So good luck, I hope it passes.
Okay, thanks, Rich. Anyone else? Okay. And let's see. I make a mo, there being no further comments, I make a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. I make a motion to adjourn the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, now we're done with that piece. Now we go to the regular meeting. Don't run away. The regular meeting now. Okay, we're going to please rise, and then we'll have a moment of silence afterwards. It is with great sorrow that I have to announce the tragic death of past long-serving East Clinton Fire Chief, Tim McCormick, in the helicopter crash yesterday on June tenth, twenty nineteen, in New York City. If you haven't seen it on TV, you will shortly. So we'll pledge to the flag first. I pledge allegiance to the flag, and to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Now a moment of silence. Okay, please be seated. Now we follow the agenda. If you don't have an agenda, there's some in the back. Okay, the first order of business is approval of minutes, and we have lots of meetings between meetings. So don't get bored, but we're going to do them. I make a motion to approve the minutes of the May second, twenty nineteen zoning revision workshop. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. I make a motion to approve the minutes of the May fourteenth, twenty nineteen public hearing on the moratorium. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. I make a motion to approve the minutes of the May fourteen, twenty nineteen town public hearing on solar. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. I make a motion to approve the minutes of the May sixteen, twenty nineteen zoning revision workshop. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. I make a motion to approve the minutes of the June fourth, twenty nineteen executive session. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Oh, I missed the reg, I missed one.
Yeah, I didn't have it in there.
Oh.
You can just do it.
I make a mot, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular.
Town board.
Town board meeting, May fourteenth, pub, no. Yeah, regular meeting on May fourteenth. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. That's the long part. Next part is, you can have, we have public discussion, and the public discussion are on agenda items that are on the agenda. So if they're on the agenda, you can get up, do the same process, stand up, tell us, comments, et cetera. Again, you're speaking to the board. Is there anyone that wants to talk on it? Okay, I make a motion to open the meeting to public discussion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Okay, Russ, you're on.
Russ Tompkins, Schultzville. I'm just going to ask you a question. On the old business, what is DT, DCTC, Application for Transportation, what's that involved?
Dutchess County Transportation Committee. That's, that's what the initials mean. And essentially, it's changing a study from Solpoint Turnpike that we requested earlier to Schultz, uh, to Slade Quarry Road, to see if there's a way of reducing accidents.
People slow down.
Well, yeah.
Under new business, uh, on number four, what is reimbursement of overpayment of cemetery fee involved?
Should I explain it?
Yeah, go ahead.
I overcharged somebody who had a funeral by mistake.
That was cruel and unusual.
Yes, it was. And I feel deeply about it.
So we're paying them back.
So we owe them two hundred and fifty dollars, and that's what we're reimbursing for that.
And I see approval waiver of thirty-day liquor license hold.
Mm-hmm.
Does the town issue the liquor license? I thought that was through the.
No, state does. Part of the law is the town could request a thirty-day delay if there's a controversial liquor license requirement.
So you could, but you're just saying you don't.
I don't think the Schultzville store is controversial.
Okay, thanks for clarifying those.
Next one. Okay, I make a motion to return to regular order of business. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Okay, start off with supervisors' comments. I got several of them this time. Oh, forgot to give them yours. Uh, the town of Clinton offices court and highway department will be closed on July fourth holiday, Thursday, July fourth. The town recycling center will be open on Saturday, July sixth, as usual, from seven thirty AM to noon. So you get rid of your trash from the party. The towns of Clinton and Hyde Park will hold their Duchess County Office for the Agent Senior Picnic on Wednesday, June, I mean, July tenth, rain or shine, at noon in the Francis Mark Memorial Park in Clinton, on Clinton Hollow Road. Reservations are required by calling eight four five four eight six two six six six, which is their normal number, by Thursday, June twenty seventh. You should have all received a postcard in the mail with more details. I just got mine today. The town of Clinton has received a certificate of achievement from PERMA, that's our workers' compensation insurance agent, uh, not agent, but company, for having no workers' compensation claims during twenty eighteen. Thanks are given to all employees for their safety efforts. Thanks are given to the Clinton Friendship Garden Club for the placement of Memorial Day wreaths on the town complex doors. The recognition of our veterans is greatly appreciated, and you all probably saw it right on the door as you walked in. So that's all I had on supervisors. Now off to planning board.
Excuse me, planning board had one meeting, the, on June eleventh. There were two applicants that came in for area variances for side yard setback reductions, one on Browning Road, the other on Clinton Hollow Road. Both were approved by the, or given a positive recommendation by the planning board and sent off to the, to the ZBA. The third item on the agenda, applicant on Hollow Road, property goes, actually goes through from Hollow to Brown's Pond, and needed a, wants to build a driveway with access from down Brown's Pond Road, which required a wetlands permit because of proximity to, to a wetland. And the board issued a negative, negative declaration and approved the request. And then also, that same evening, Councilman Witten came in to visit with the planning board, had a lengthy discussion about the proposed local law number two, dealing with solar and wind energy systems. June fourth meeting was canceled. Lack of, lack of items on the agenda.
Thank you. Next one, ZBA.
ZBA met on May twenty-third. Two of the three applicants whom I just mentioned from the previous meeting of the planning board on Hollow Road and Browning Road were in for area variances on their side setback requests. For the, the first one, there's difference of opinion between the ZBA and the zoning administrator. ZBA ruled that a variance is not necessary, so no action was taken. In the second one, area variance was granted with condition. And then a lengthy discussion with, with members of the ZBA, having to do with the proposed local law on events and, on event centers. End of report.
Thank you. Next one, Conservation Advisory Committee, that's the CAC.
So the CAC met on May eighth, which was before our last town board meeting, so I've actually reported on all their meetings since our last one. However, just today, I received the annual benchmarking report from the resolution on benchmarking that we did last year. The CAC is required to give us their report every year in June. It's the first year that we're benchmarking. Benchmarking is when you, basically, we are tracking all of the energy usage in all of the buildings that are over a thousand square feet in the town campus. Electricity, fuel, oil, propane. And so we obviously don't have trends, this is the first year we've done it, so we'll need a few more years. But I thought one of the most interesting things was that electricity usage accounts for fifty-four percent of the town's energy, but it only accounts for about twenty-eight percent of our greenhouse gas emissions. The rest of it comes from fuel use, so, and we may already have some ideas on where we can cut back on, in some places, and to save some energy and maybe save some money.
Now, you got to be a little careful on understanding the electric usage. We do use solar, so the solar reduces the energy that we use in the town hall, complex area, that's this area here, so.
Which is why it didn't account for the greenhouse gases.
Yeah, so it's, it's a mixed bag, it's not clean.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's it.
But, oh, and the report will be available on the CAC portion of the town website, they're going to post it there.
Oh, good.
So everybody can see it.
Okay, Recreation Committee.
Well, as you may or may not know, the town parks are now operational and in full swing for summer events, and specifically the Fran Mark Park. We've had swimming available on weekends only through, from Memorial Day through the end of June. After that, we will have lifeguards on duty for seven days a week, and swimming will be available. We did go through a very rigorous health exam, I will say, health certification for Fran Mark Park because of swimming and so on. That was implemented last year, and we passed with fly in color, so I have to give the staff a kudo for that. We have hired seven lifeguards for the season and three gate guards. We've also, in a past meeting, we approved the purchase of some equipment for our parks, and that should be in the end of June, the beginning of July. Camp schedules and. Camp schedules and forms and fees are all on the web for anyone that's interested. Uh, the camps are, uh, for four weeks, from July eighth through July nineteenth and August fifth through August sixteenth. The fees are seventy-five dollars for residents. These are for children, obviously. And two hundred and twenty-five dollars for non-residents. We do still have some ongoing issues with the park. Uh, one, the bathroom roof in Friends Park needs to be replaced. That's been an issue now for over a year. We must do something about it. And also, the dugout roof in Fran Marks Park as well. End of report.
Thank you. Next one's building inspector.
Building inspector. The number of building permits that were issued during this period was sixteen. The number of COs and CCs were twelve. The number of title searches were eight. The number of mileage that the building inspector logs during this period was a hundred and sixty-six miles through the community. The cost of the construction for the permits is, uh, five hundred and two... Five hundred and two thousand, five hundred and twenty-one, seventy-six. And I would just highlight two of the, uh, the permits that have been issued. One is for, uh, a hundred thousand dollars for, uh, five eighty-six Clinton Hollow Road for a carport and garage. And another one is for two oh five East Falkhill Road for an in-ground pool for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. End of report.
Thank you. Uh, zoning administrator.
Uh, zoning, a busy month for the zoning administrator. Reviewed seven building permits with the usual range of activities. Pools, demolitionist generators, residential alterations. We have a number of, uh, legal issues right now in front of the zoning administrator. On Falkhill Road, an ongoing issue having to do with, um, cleaning up the property. The, uh, town has been in court, I believe, twice on this matter. And, uh, most recent time, judge gave the defendant a hundred and twenty days to remedy the violation, or we will proceed to trial on the first of August. On Deer Ridge Drive, an ongoing situation there that's been in front of the town for quite a while. There is a, uh, request for interpretation pending in front of the zoning board of appeals that has been there for a couple of months now with extensive hearings and testimonies on both sides and also from neighbors about hazardous odors and smoke. The ZBA closed the public hearing, uh, last month, or the month before, rather. Decision must be made by the board within sixty-two days, which will be coming up very shortly, uh, by the end of this month. Also, on Deer Ridge Drive, complaints submitted, some of the same parties involved, having to do with various zoning violations that are also now in front of the, uh, in front of the zoning, enforcement officer, who is trying to, um, get access to the property and, uh, find out, or at least investigate the, uh, the nature of the, the nature of the issues. Old Adrian's Farm, which we've talked about on a number of occasions in, uh, the context of our zoning review. The owner's representative submitted a sign application and a site plan for market, for a microbrewery, parking area for approximately forty cars, new well and septic system, adding a pavilion for farm equipment and event venues. But the application was, uh, was re... was withdrawn after having been resubmitted. On Schultzville Road, a neighbor complaining about, uh, or rather, a resident complaining about a neighbor running a small, um, sawmill on their property. The zoning enforcement officer intervened, was able to, uh, negotiate, uh, a settlement or an agreement, at least between the two parties, which hopefully will, uh, will carry over on terms of erecting a fence, as a sound barrier, a visual barrier, perhaps limiting the hours of operation and, uh, eliminating chainsawing and things of that sort. So we'll have to see how that works out. Fiddler's Bridge Road, unregistered vehicle. If the violation is, has been resolved. Shadlow Lane, also, unregistered vehicles. That violation is still open. The, um, zoning officer asked the, uh, homeowner to remedy the violation, bring the property into compliance, and is awaiting, is awaiting her response. On Hollow Road, junk cars, again. Unregistered vehicles. Were given thirty days. The owners were given thirty days to remove the violation. On Pumpkin Lane, an issue having to do with storing manure in a dumpster located in the front yard setback on a horse farm. Uh, the CEO visited the property, confirmed the violation, spoke to the owners of the farm, and they agreed to move the dumpster to an area away from the front of the property. Uh, the violation is still open, so that has not yet been, that change has not yet been affected. On Route nine G, the, um, what we used to call the Old Stone Farm.
Naylor Farm.
Which is, and the Naylor Farm, even earlier than that, is now referred to as the Duchess, being advertised as a secret hotel and restaurant. This has been an ongoing situation that we've also discussed at the zoning revision workshops several times. There is a, uh, the owners do have a special use permit, which they've had for a number of years, to operate a conference center. However, they have, uh, sort of expanded the understanding of what a conference center is to include a weekend getaway and a restaurant and weddings and events of that sort, which are, as we all know, not allowed in the Town of Clinton. So the zoning enforcement officer has been in contact with them and has actually issued a cease and desist order after consulting with the town attorney. Lastly, on Lauren Lane, complaint, actually called into the town supervisor and referred to the CEO, having to do with, uh, illegal digging and trenching. We directed water drainage to neighboring properties. The CEO issued a verbal, uh, stop work order, went to the property, had a meeting with the owner and the town engineer, and determined that the trench from the existing, retaining pond to the north side of the property should be terminated. Concern was that the overflow would make its way onto Lauren Lane. The owner accepted the town engineer's assessment and agreed to fill in the trenching and secondary retention hole. As of this writing meeting the other day, the remedial work is in progress. So that was a busy month for our zoning administrator.
In particular, that situation is the fact that the water runoff is from Hollow Road across this person's property and coming down into his. So it's really a county issue of taking care of their water, not the homeowner. So it, it's a mixed bag that's gotta be resolved. But it, it's not the homeowner that generated the problem. Okay, now we go to highway.
Before I read the highway report, I just wanna reflect on the thing you mentioned earlier, that we did receive, uh, recognition for having a, uh, a very safe 2018. And, uh, I just wanna, just compliment Darren and his highway guys, okay? Because if you look at the... Go ahead, why not? If you look at the exposure that we have with them using, you all, their jobs, every day. There is such propensity for some kind of accident. And he makes sure that they go through all kinds of training. So I think, uh, that applause was well deserved. Thank you. So highway reports, at the begin... We are, uh, actually preparing a field road for blacktopping. Uh, we're reserving Pumpkin Lane, Nine Partners Road and Shadlow for, and preparing for blacktopping as well. Uh, they removed a dangerous tree from Hibernia Road with the bucket truck, which we have purchased on a shared basis with other communities. Clear, they cleared brush and small dead trees around the roads. They've mo... done mowing, obviously, this time of year, and continue to do dirt patching. That's an ongoing thing all, all the time. End of report.
Thank you. Next one, scenic.
I just have one question. The field road, this is the project that we've been talking about.
This is, we've been talking about it for three years, yes. It's finally getting there.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, next one, scenic and historic roads.
No activity this month.
Oh, okay. Library.
The library trustees met last night. They are hosting a car show on Saturday, June twenty-second, from two to five PM at three hundred Schultzville Road. Cars from a private collection will be on display, including a nineteen twenty-five Rolls Royce, a nineteen thirty-one Packard, nineteen fifty-two Bentley. Tickets may be purchased in advance at the library. It's ten dollars for adults, five dollars for children, and children under six are free. There will be refreshments. Uh, the Friday night summer concert series has started, so you can check the town we... uh, the library website for the entire schedule of the performers all summer. The trustees expressed their gratitude to the town board for the approval of the lighting upgrade, and it's made a big difference in their space. If you haven't had a chance to visit the library over the last couple of weeks, there's been a major transformation. Uh, new carpeting was installed. The entire space was repainted. And a special thank you is in order for Eric Sternberg and Drew Bancroft for volunteering their time. They both spent many hours moving books and shelving units to help accomplish the library facelift.
The other comment I have, they moved the shelves, so you gotta find where the new books are, where they are. They're not where you thought they are.
They rearranged it, but it, there's a lot of open, more open space in the library now. It looks, it looks wonderful.
And the other thing, on that car show, it's at Botways, which is on Schultzville Road, near Willow. It's where the, um...
Covered bridge.
Covered bridges. It's, that's, that's the place.
When you get there, follow the signs. I don't think they're going to have, there's two entrances. They're not having people enter at the covered bridge.
But I'm just, most people know of that location.
They will have signs that day.
Yeah. They'll go in the side road.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Next, we go to cable vision or Altice.
Uh, we had one communication from Altice. The broadcast TV fee for new residential and commercial video customers will be seven forty-nine a month. That's for new residential and commercial video customers. The basic broadcast tier rate is unchanged for new and existing customers, and the broadcast TV fee for existing customers will remain at five ninety-nine a month.
The first time in a while we didn't get an increase.
Only to new ones.
Yeah. Okay, zoning revision.
So, um, we've taken a little detour and, uh, we're handling a, uh, pressing issue with these wedding adventures or events. And, uh, and so, uh, I see that, uh, we've only had one email as to some suggested changes, which, I don't know who printed it out, but I see we have a packet here, so, uh, with those comments attached, so... Uh, the next meeting will be next, uh, Thursday, not this Thursday, so the twentieth. Uh, and then the following Thursday is July fourth, so we won't be having a meeting. So between now and the next town board meeting, we'll only have one zoning revision meeting.
Okay, thank you. Next one is proposed transmission lines. New York State ISO Independent System Operator has approved Transco's project on April eighth, 2019 to transport two hundred, two thousand one hundred megawatts of electricity. This is for transmission line going from Albany to Pleasant Valley through Clinton on the east side of Center Road. That's the one over there, the two towers. A Transco workshop will be held on June twenty-seventh with details, and I'll give them later on, to, uh, tell you what's all happening. There will be no, no power line workshop following this town board meeting. After the workshop, we'll probably have another one. Okay, that's that one. Cemeteries.
Best for last, huh? The, uh...
Generally is.
Yeah, I suppose. Actually, there's very little to report, I'm pleased to say.
Okay, well, that's good.
It's always good news, yeah, that's good news. The issue to, uh, the immediate issue in, in front of us at the moment is across the road over at Schultzville, where there are a number of stones that are either damaged or falling down or on the verge of falling down. And so I went over there the other day and took some pictures, sent them over to Cemetery Services. They will come out and inspect the stones and presumably be able to give us an estimate as to how much it will cost to repair them. Other than that, we are still awaiting, uh, the, um, deed report from, uh, our attorney about the, um, just to make sure that everything is squared away with the, with the, with the property transfer over Schultzville. And, uh, that's, that's pretty much it.
The right of way, are we, is he working on that as well?
Well, yeah, based on what the deed, what the, um, what the deed thing says, if there's any easements involved, yeah, we'll take that up.
For years, we've had the right of way through the Clinton Alliance Church, the cemetery. And, uh, we've made the decision that it's time to
Yes.
make that a more formal kind of agreement.
What, what the attorney would like to be sure about is that there are no restrictions in the existing deed or the existing property. Before we go ahead and do that, but yes, that's on the, yeah, that's on the list of things to do.
And we're doing title search on it, so that may uncover some more.
That's what I meant, I meant the, I, sorry, I misspoke. I meant title search. The other thing we'll need to do next month, and we should have done it this month, is, um... We had the issue about insurance, liability insurance, and I have some information from, uh, our broker. So I will get that out to the board, and they can review it and put it on the agenda.
We've got it.
A month, yeah, talk about it next month.
Okay. Any other topics that, uh, we missed by title? Good. Off we go into old business. This is the local law, proposed local law two on solar.
All right, the ongoing saga of solar. I wanna first thank everybody for the comments tonight. Uh, they've been valuable. I wanna thank the planning board for meeting for, with me, Robert Maripode, for meeting with me this month. Uh, we made a lot of changes, and I wanted to just go over that real quick. There was an acreage limit, uh, that sort of was an oversight. It wasn't in the original law. So what we've added now is either ten percent of the parcel or seven acres, whichever is less. So, um, the largest farm you could have is seven acres, and you'd have to have a seven...
Solar farm.
Solar farm. Um, the largest solar farm you can have is seven acres, and you'd have to have a seventy acre parcel to do it. We changed some of the buffering, uh, wording. We removed deciduous trees, since, you know, in the winter, they lose their leaves, and they wouldn't buffer too many things. On top of which, they tend to grow, and the leaves are above what you would be buffering. So, uh, we've kept it at evergreens. In terms of questions tonight that I heard at the public hearing, thanks for the perennial vegetation misspelling. I'll make sure I get on that. I wanted to comment more philosophically on the, on the being the leader thing that we heard, and why we should do this to be a leader. We're not. Every single town around us has a Tier III solar law on the books. Every single one of them. We do not. Ours, the one that is being proposed, is much more comprehensive. I think the towns around us may run into some issues because they just sort of willy-nilly put 30-acre limits on it and things like this, and, and I don't think they put as much thought into it as we've put into ours. So I think that's something we should all know. The, the way that these things, and it was briefly mentioned when somebody brought up Central Hudson, the way these things are limited, if you're afraid that we're going to just have solar farms everywhere, is it's called the hosting capacity. Central Hudson can only accept so much electricity coming into their three-phase lines. And you can go type into Google "Central Hudson hosting capacity map," and you'll see a map of the entire, you can zoom into the entire town and see where all of the lines run through the town. And if you click on each spot, it tells you how much electricity they can accept from a solar farm. So before, and it's been added to the legislation wording, that before you even get to the planning board, you have to get permission from Central Hudson that they can host the capacity of the farm that you're planning. Because Central Hudson can put a stop to it right away and just say, you know what, that's too big. You're going to be putting way too much electricity into our grid, and we can't accept it in that spot. Depending on where you are in the town, I think it's 2.5 megawatts over by 9G, it's 1.5 megawatts along Pumpkin Lane, it's 2 megawatts along Clinton Hollow Road. So depending on where you are, you can have larger farms or smaller ones. But that is sort of the natural limit. Certainly, Central Hudson could spend the money at some point to upgrade their line, so it could change things. But hosting capacity is the real limit on these things. And I did want to point out, it's a good discussion to have, and I think we should have it, about Section 487 of the real property tax law. We could opt out of giving that tax exemption to solar farms. It would only be on, the exemption is only on the increase in value to the property from the farm. The problem with opting out is we can't just opt out of Tier III systems. We'd have to opt out of the entire section, which would eliminate the tax incentive for somebody to put it on their roof, or somebody to have a small array on their front yard. And that's the vast majority of people putting in solar, is that. And I don't, my opinion would be that we wouldn't want to eliminate that tax break for, for residents of the town trying to put a few solar panels on their roof. And I think that's all my comments. I have, there have been a lot of changes, a lot of substantive changes to the law, and I've gotten a lot, many more comments from residents. I just got one today that was essay-length, that I'd like to go over and look at. So in the continuing saga, I think, you know, we don't have people coming to the planning board and applying for these things right now, so there is no rush. And I would like to hold the public hearing open one more month, and hopefully have an updated version of this on the website in about a week. I should be able to incorporate everything, and then we'll have one more public hearing on it, and then hopefully next month, we can put it to bed.
Yeah. Another comment he didn't mention is the fact that it's also self-limiting financially. Central Hudson is between $100,000 and $1/4 million hookup fees to their lines. And this is not waived. I mean, it, it depends on the length and some of this stuff, but that generally precludes people willy-nilly just going and saying, I want to hook up. Forget about the restrictions of where you can do it.
It depends where you locate the farm and how long they have to run lines to get to their, to their grid.
I mean, I would think the seven-acre limit would also be a structural impediment. The structural, the seven acres will limit it in terms of-
Yeah, the seven acres limits it, and then the hosting capacity limits it. So even, and, and that's a good thing about the hosting capacity. So say a seven-acre farm goes in on 9G, and that is 2.5 megawatts, then if somebody else next door wants to put in another seven acres, Central Hudson would say, sorry, somebody got there before you. So it, it limits, it's sort of the natural limit on having these things all over the place. It wouldn't happen. And as I said, every town around us has these on the books, and it doesn't seem like they're plagued with solar farms.
One of the things that I talked to you about earlier, is there, is there a possibility that Tier III could be defined differently? That Tier III could be without the wind, but using, you know, the-
Well, Tier III is just so, is Tier III solar systems. The wind energy portion of this was included in it because I started from the basis of the solar and wind energy law that's currently on the books.
Right, right.
We could separate out the wind portion and make a separate law that we vote on, and decide whether we want to keep that wind portion. Although I would say that the way it's written right now, it, it's written to prevent them. And if we eliminated that law, I fear that then people would be coming in and trying to do, try and put up large windmills.
Or, or take us to court.
Or take us to court for not allowing, you know, because we wouldn't have anything on the books.
All right. Thank you.
So.
I have-
Yes, sorry.
So, some good discussion tonight. I appreciate everybody's comments, and something that you just said, it also kind of goes in on, on the tax aspect of it. My understanding, and I didn't read about it, and I definitely intend to, but maybe you can either find out or fill me in if you do know, the 487 only allows us to tax those parcels. I don't think they lose their, their rebate incentive from the state, and that's usually what people are going for. It would just be the ability for us to tax the improvement that the 487 is precluding, so that if someone puts $100,000 worth on their roof or on the property, it's a $100,000 improvement to the property that then they would be assessed. That was my only understanding. They wouldn't be losing their tax incentives.
They would still be paying the same property taxes. Currently, we have not opted out of Section 487, so they would still be paying the same property taxes as they pay now, if they say put-
But they're not losing that, that rebate from the state?
No, they're not losing the rebate from the state.
Okay.
But, so say somebody puts a $25,000 solar array on their roof. If we opt out of 487, then we would increase their assessment by $25,000.
Maybe. It still goes by, dollar-for-dollar improvements, like you put $100,000 pool and it doesn't improve your property by $100,000.
Sure. I, I just, that's the vast majority of the property owners are putting solar on their roof and small arrays on their front yard. And I just don't, my opinion is I don't see why we would take away, or, or, increase their taxes for doing so.
Well, I mean, that's unfortunately the way our taxing system is, that if someone improves their property, they're being taxed. So we only have carved out this one aspect being solar, so anybody who has solar is now getting, getting an advantage that everybody else does not.
I don't think it comes as a surprise that I would probably fall on the side of, let's not put roadblocks in front of people trying to do what's right-
Well, it's not a roadblock, and I don't, I don't think that per se, that it's going to change that much of the assessment on the small homeowner. It's really getting at, really, the bigger solar farms, which, which is really the intent.
Yeah, and we can have that discussion. And that's not, that's even something we can do long after this pass, like anytime we want.
But I just wanted to clarify that. And then, second point was the capacity, which is something I didn't even look at or think about, which is that if we now have these solar farms coming in, and it maxes out the capacity that Central Hudson can take, would that now stop anybody from individually putting solar onto their roofs? Because that's back fed into the solar, you know, into the electrical system too.
That's much smaller.
I know, but if everybody did it-
And they, they build in a buffer for that.
And that's not three-phase.
They have a built-in buffer.
I would just be concerned about that, and I hadn't thought about it before, so it's definitely something I want to look at and research.
I'm not sure if this 487 is the one that I'm familiar with, which was enacted in, in the 90s. I was involved with that. But in that case, that was for commercial businesses, and what it did was it allowed the town to give a reduced first year, no assessment increase, and it increased until 10 years later, they got the full increase. So I don't know if you're talking about the same one or not. I, I have to look it up. But that was the gist of that one, and it had nothing to do with solar. It was any commercial endeavor. So in other words, if you brought in a big box store, or somebody like Schultzville Stores spent $3 million to rebuild something there, they would get the first year, they would get no tax increase, but then it would increment for 10 years to the full value of that assessment. But I, I got to read to see which number this is that you're talking about. I don't know that.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I think what we should clarify is that this current legislation does not opt us out of Section 487 of the real property tax law. We can do that at any time. It does not need to be in here. And so this is a good conversation. We should all be looking it up and reading it, and then coming to our own differing opinions on it, and, and have that conversation.
Is your motion?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Second one?
Yes. So I make a motion that the public hearing be held open until July 9th, 2019, at 6:15 p.m. So the public can comment on the changes that were incorporated after meeting with the ZBA Planning Board and Zoning Administrator, among others.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
Thank you. Oh, here it is. In this year's budget, we approved $15,000 for painting of the buildings. We thought we would start with the Masonic Hall, but $15,000 isn't nearly enough to paint the Masonic Hall. So we had, in a conversation with our, with Clark Patterson Lee-
Town engineer.
Town engineer, sorry. I was going to say planning, and I knew that was wrong. We decided to go create an RFP for the painting of the schoolhouse. And so that RFP is attached here that you've all seen. It would include removing of any lead paint that may be on the building, removing of the shutters, and replacing them with plastic ones that the town would purchase, and repainting the building.
Well, I got some comments.
Sure.
Page five. Paragraph two from the top says to complete all the work as specified within a three-year period on which this bid is based. So a person has three years to paint the building. That seems a little long.
It's funny, because earlier in this, I thought it said 60-something days or something.
No, I didn't see anything earlier than that, that I recall.
Work shall be completed within 45 days, weather permitting of authorization to proceed by the town.
Yeah, so, I mean-
Yeah, so I can ask Pete about that, why, and if we can-
It's way out of bounds.
The difference may be that once you start it, you have to finish it, but here you've got three years to start it. That may be what they're-
No, it says you got to start within a certain number of days.
Yeah, it says that, oh, it says it has to be completed within 45 days of authorization to proceed.
Right.
I think we can ask Pete if we could just remove that three-year period.
Yeah, to me, it seems exorbitant.
Yeah, maybe complete all the work within three months.
Well, it depends on the time and the weather. Then there's another question on page nine. Here I get a question on payments. Is there any holdback after completion for the work for warranty, which is specified in the next page? There is no, all it says is guaranteed for a minimum of one year. I can guarantee anything for one year if there's no penalty on me. You know?
Yeah, no, I understand.
Normally, like on development roads-
We'll say my concern.
We say a year, and then we have a bond, a maintenance bond. And then after the year, we inspect it, and we give them back the money. But I, I just see that missing between these two areas. Then the other question I have, what's the likelihood that this whole thing is going to be under $15,000? If it's not, then-
Then we have a decision with the board.
Well, no, but I'm just saying, is it a wasted exercise if it's going to be, if everything comes out 25,000 to 50, I'm just picking numbers, and we only have 15, then the whole exercise is wasted?
I don't think it's a wasted exercise, because it would give us a good idea of how much we underfunded this appropriation in the budget this year, and how much we need to not underfund it when we get to November.
But I'm just, I'm just questioning-
And that $15,000 will still remain there, so it would be added to if it doesn't-
No, it doesn't remain there as it is because of where it is located in the budget.
Okay.
I mean, we could do a special arrangement to sort of save it for next year, but as it stands right now, it's not savable.
I think that it's June, and we need to move forward with this.
Oh, I'm not-
I think the longer we put off painting these buildings, the more expensive it's going to get for us.
And maybe it's a portion of the building. Maybe it's two sides. Maybe it's something. We've already held money from last year that wasn't spent on the facility. I would say we need to spend it where we can and add to it as we can in 2020.
I thought we were using a, or we were talking about an owner-operator effort to save on-
Yeah, that would be, that would be the effort. If, if the owner of the company is the one doing the painting, then he doesn't need to go by prevailing wages, so we could save some money there in the bid.
But I don't know.
But we don't know. I mean, you know, we have to put out the-
Oh, I thought we had somebody in mind.
There are people that we have in mind.
There are people, but we don't know what the number is.
But, you know, we don't know what they're going to bid. We can't-
The bids aren't in yet.
We can't predict the future.
Have a marmaristle.
I mean, I very often send estimates to people in my own business, and they're shocked by the price, so.
Oh, you're overcharging.
I'm overcharging, apparently.
Now, you made a comment, which is not consistent with what the bid, page three.
What's that?
On the top, where it says, remove existing wood shutters for storage by town, install plastic shutters on all windows colored by owner.
Yeah.
The question I had was, you said the town would provide, in your words, the shutters, and this says they supply the shutters. I'm just trying to be sure, which way is the costing? Did you make a verbal mistake, or is this the word that it should-
Well, I made a verbal mistake, because we go by the paper.
Okay. I just want to be sure, because it is a difference in money.
Yeah, it is.
I'm not against it. I'm just trying to be sure we understand what we're talking about, so.
And I will say, will we be able to approve this tonight with those changes as amended? Or is this something that has to get pushed off for another month?
I'm good with it.
What's that?
I'm good with it.
If, you know, if we want to make this agreement here, we can change it right now.
Obviously, we don't want the, the three years, so-
Yeah, we don't want the three years.
So we can drop the three years, just take that whole sentence out?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, because that makes no sense, but just... Then the other thing is, and I don't know if you want to have a holdback or not, you know, as I said, to provide a guarantee that the shutters don't fall off right away, or the paint doesn't run off, you know, it's all water-based paint arranged, and it all comes off. What did you pay for? Nothing. I'm not against the one year. I'm just saying there should be some sort of holdback, like-
Yeah, I, well, the reason I hesitate is because-
I don't know. Not, I'm not looking for a force-
The reason I hesitate is because I would not provide the, the accurate wording for that. I'm not the expert on this, and, and that's something that I relied on the engineer board.
But if we agree with the concept-
Yeah, I agree with the concept, sure.
That we should do it. I mean, I'll support it, and he can-
He can, he can do that.
Wordsmith it for the final version that Carol's going to have to publish. And the other approach you can have is to just allow it to go so that you don't get into a panic mode at the very end. Say all of them come in at 20,000 or 30,000, I don't know what the number is. Say they come in at that number, and we only have 15. Maybe saying that, do front and right side.
Yeah, I think that-
Doing, you know-
That's certainly, that's certainly a conversation we'll have to have, and we get the bids. I, I don't think that's something we can-
But that's not allowed in here. This is a full building. RFPs allow you to negotiate, but the way it's written here, this is the full building. That's all.
I guarantee you're not going to get that building. I guarantee, I know about painting.
Yeah.
You're not going to get that building completely done for $15,000.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just saying we should have some wiggle room in the contract to allow us to do one, two, three, four sides or whatever, and then the ramp. Does he have the ramp in there?
So just add up the option to partially paint the building.
Sides and ramp, because you get the ramp here, too. You get the whole thing. So, you know, what would be the preference? The ramp and the front? I don't know. I'm looking to you to-
Preferences. Well, well, my preference would be to fund the whole thing and paint the building.
I know. But where are you getting the money?
Well, let's see what we get for bids, and then we can argue about what we're going to paint.
That's what I think.
Yeah.
That's what I'd like to do.
I was just trying to look at the-
I also, and, and-
Allowed that to exist, but it doesn't really allow it.
And I say it with all due respect, but we've had the bid for a while, and, and these questions, I know you were back and forth with Pete, like, these questions could have come up at any point.
I, I just saw this, like, yesterday.
Oh, I did.
Or Friday, but, so, I mean, I do other things than this.
Oh, I understand. I understand. We all do.
So that's why I just had these. So, I mean, if you want to put in some wording to allow partial painting, fine. I have no, no big deal on that.
So-
And work with Pete on putting it in, fine.
We'll agree. I'll see if I can get some wiggle room on the partial painting gun, add it in, the holdback, and eliminating that sentence on for a year.
Yeah.
Just making that clear as I make the motion.
Right.
I make a motion, be resolved the town board approve an RFP as amended for the painting of the exterior of the schoolhouse buildings due to the town clerk by 10 a.m. July 2nd, 2019. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Next one here. Get where we are. This is the DCTC application. I sent a letter requesting the Dutchess County Transportation Council to replace the study for the Salt Point Turnpike path, which we approved in the fall, with the new one for the Slade Quarry-Bullshead Road accidents. This change was requested by Dutchess County Transportation Staff due to the more than 40 accidents occurring in this study area of the road, and the road area is from Island Hollow up to Amiville. So it's the hill and around the curves. The evaluation team will meet and be reviewing the situation during the end of July, public input- Public input and comment workshops will follow to establish the needed corrective actions to help reduce the number of accidents. The following resolution authorizes the change. The Salt Point Turnpath, Turnpike Path Study will be resubmitted next year. So, we're not losing it, we're just going to resubmit it next year.
Why don't we keep the Salt Point Turnpike thing, which we've been talking about forever, and do this one the following year?
Because this is the one that they recommend and said they had a lot more serious accidents. We don't have serious accidents like deaths and other things here.
Salt Point Turnpike people walk.
I understand they walk.
The problem with Slate Quarry Road is people drive too fast.
Well, we got to fix the problem there.
Well, I'm not sure, how do you fix the problem if people are driving too fast?
Well, that's why we're having this analysis and study group.
You're going to tell those people are driving too fast.
No, well, you know, we had a lot of accidents on the other end of Slate Quarry Road, and they did a big study very similar to this. They put up ninety-five signs and different things, and hopefully, they reduced the number of accidents. I, I don't have a count for that.
Didn't the state go through there recently and lower the speed limit?
No, it's always been forty-five.
I thought they lowered the speed limit.
No, it's forty-five.
I thought they lowered certain sections to forty-five.
It's forty-five from Center Road to Ninety-G.
I recall having this conversation in another context.
There was a context that someone wanted a building permit, and they wouldn't give it to them because it was fifty-five, and they said they were already going faster than fifty-five, and...
And they lowered this...
And just because someone was breaking the law shouldn't be a reason that they got denied. And ultimately, they got what they wanted as far as the building permit.
So, there was an area, at least that segment, right, where the speed limit was lowered.
It was.
But people are still driving.
It was lowered lots of times.
People still driving seventy-five miles an hour, no matter what.
I kind of agree with you in a sense that I find more concern with Salt Point because it is more of a walking area because we do have Stewart's, and we do have the playground.
Heritage.
Kids are playing, and they walk over to Stewart's, and where Bull's Head is not, I mean, obviously, near Silver Lake, maybe, but, you know, for the most part, I find more of a hazard in that Salt Point section.
That's my favorite, too.
But we've been, we've been denied before, maybe we should try again.
Well, that's, that's for a speed reduction, that's not necessarily for...
No, for paths, I've been trying to do it since mid-nineties, I've been trying.
Yeah, because that area doesn't qualify for the community block grant.
Well, it's not community...
But what does, what exactly, I mean, this application is simply, what, a request for a study? Is that what this is?
Well, it makes a study and recommendations, and essentially, since it's a county road, those recommendations are going to be given to the county to implement. It's not our road, so I can't implement it.
Is it tantamount to implication, to implementation, or is it just a study?
Oh, yeah, no, 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 it's implementation.
I mean, ultimately, that's what, another, another study doesn't help us. We need something to, something to be done.
So, that, that's what we're trying to do here.
I would say, in support of this, that there are more deaths on Slate Quarry Road. More accidents, more serious accidents on Slate Quarry.
Yeah, because they're traveling faster.
Yeah, yeah, and if this could reduce that, then I certainly think it's worth it.
Well, there's a couple things, one, the hill coming down, when they redid it about six years ago, re-macadam it, they never made it anti-skid, for example. Now, in the previous iteration, when they macadamed it, when I was in office, I made them do it. They didn't do it this time to save money. So, there, there are physical things that we can inquire and have be done.
Well, just coming out of Pumpkin, that, that one hill there is such a short distance between Pumpkin and the hill. I, I myself turned out of it the other day, and that car was right up on me, so, you know...
I live right there, um, every day, it's scary.
Center Road, Center Road as well. You turn left on Center Road, and before you know it, there's somebody on your tail.
Well, yeah, that's what I'm saying, we're going all the way from Island Hollow up to Ameyville, because that's where, if you look at the dots on the map that I sent you, there are a lot of dots.
We'll utilize our speed machine, is who that comes in, that will help get the sheriff right behind it.
There you go. Okay, so, let's see where we are here. I make a motion that the town board approves the following resolution. Be it resolved, the town board approves replacing the Dutchess County Transportation Council. Application for transportation planning assistance for Salt Point Turnpike, replacing rather, with Slate Quarry-Bullshead Road accidents applications. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed.
One, no. Yep. So, it's carried. Okay, next one is summer camp.
Okay, this motion is just made every year to just sort of formalize the fact that we have the summer activities. So, I would like to make a motion that the town board approve the following resolution. Be it resolved, that the town board approve resolution for summer camp information. Attached, is included the camp dates and forms.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. New business, this is the waiver for the Shilpsville store, new name, to get a liquor license. The Shilpsville General Store has changed operators in May, two thousand and nineteen. The new operators will call it the Golden Russet Cafe and Groceries. In other words, they're going to have some bread, potatoes, eggs, I don't know. In the process, they will need a new liquor license to sell beer and other beverages. They are planning to open around July fourth and quickly need their liquor license, so the following resolution waives the thirty-day delay and supports their application. We typically do this whenever those stores do that.
So, they can get it anytime? They don't have to wait thirty days?
They don't have to wait thirty days, but it still is going to take them two or three weeks to go through Albany.
Right, right.
We, we're not approving it, we're just supporting it.
Okay.
I make a motion that the board, town board approves the following resolution. Be it resolved, that the town board approves a waiver of the thirty-day liquor license hold for the Golden Russet Cafe and Grocery LLC and consents to the issuance of the liquor license. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
So, you said these are new operators?
Yes. Of the business, yes.
Of the business, yeah, they have a three-year lease of the...
Even though, even though they're not owners, they still have to reapply?
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's who sells the stuff, not the owner of the building.
I think this is a good thing, too, we have something on this side of town.
Yeah, well, it helps the...
The winos on this side of town?
No, 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 it helps the Amagans after their long stay in Wednesday, they need a cholesterol fix. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, the next one is the transportation, the transmission line thing. A public workshop by Transco will be held on Thursday, June twenty-nine, twenty-seventh, at seven p.m. in the town hall for the community to hear their proposal, schedule, and impact on the community. Everyone is invited to attend to learn and seek answers to their questions. There will be follow-up workshops as the project advances through the Article VII process. Article VII process is a New York State process for transmission lines and power plants. It's a big thing. So, I make a motion that the town board approves the following resolution, that the town board approves holding a workshop by Transco on their proposed transmission line replacement on Thursday, January twenty-seventh, June twenty-seventh, at seven p.m. in town hall. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. I encourage all to come. Okay, the next one is the bike thing.
Will it be televised?
Yes.
Will it be televised?
Yeah, be televised, YouTube, whatever you want. And there'll probably be some kind of handout setting, we'll lay them in the back if there's extras. But I encourage you to come so you can get your questions. Obviously, it mostly affects the people along the power line over here. But somebody over here on top of a hill may say, "I don't want to see the towers over there" because, you know, line of sight's above the trees. Okay, we do this bike New York thing every year. What they do is they set up a watering station, potty station, right out here. No problems, they give us insurance and all. I make a motion to approve a following resolution. Be it resolved, that the town board approves the use of the town complex as a staging area for the Bike Club Bike New York on June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. They have been using the town hall property for many years. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I just want to, do we have a map of their route? I'm only asking because last year, I got one complaint from somebody afterwards that they were going down Pumpkin Lane and blocking traffic and all.
I think if you go on their website, it has...
They have the map, okay, all right. I mean, it was one resident in a, in a town with plenty of residents.
It's very well-run.
Oh, yeah, and they have several runs. They have a, I'll say, a fifty-mile run, a ten-mile run, a five-mile, so, some go this way, some go this way, so...
And that was part of the complaint, they didn't understand why some people were turning off of the county road and going down the local roads.
Yeah, yeah, so it's mixed. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Okay, now, we're off to cemetery fees.
Okay, well, we talked about the issue here before, when Russell raised the question at the public comment session. Basically, it was an overpayment, was my error in terms of quoting an incorrect price to a family of a cremation burial recently over at Pleasant Plain Cemetery. We owe the, we owe the family two hundred and fifty dollars. And so, I will simply move that town board approves reimbursement of two hundred and fifty-dollar overcharge of burial costs to Abigail Batchelder of the Losi family.
Is there a second?
Second.
Why was, why was it over-assessed?
I read off the wrong line on the price list.
And we weren't changing the prices at the same time.
So, this is not the issue where they just didn't want to pay it?
No.
No.
They overpaid.
They were, they paid quite willingly, and I realized afterward that they paid too much. No, that's, that's a different one.
Yeah, okay, I was just clarifying.
No, we weren't being stiff.
Yeah, no, not this time, not this time.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carried, motion carried. Okay, the next one is purchase of computers for the town. The town is upgrading their Windows Seven PCs to Windows Ten PCs over the course of this year and next because Microsoft is discontinuing support of their Windows Seven product. The plan is to buy three new desktop computers with Microsoft Ten Pro operating system PCs with twenty-inch LCD, no, LED LCD monitors, and Microsoft Office twenty-nineteen home and student software for not to exceed a total cost of five thousand one hundred dollars from CCB Technology Racine, Wisconsin. The plan is to replace all the town's existing computers this year and in two thousand and twenty. So, we're just doing a part of them, and then we'll do more next year, and, and they'll be in the budget for next year. I make a motion that the town board approves the following resolution. Be it resolved, that the town board approves the purchase of three desktop computers with Microsoft Ten Pro operating system with LED LCD monitors and Microsoft Office twenty-nineteen home and student software for not to exceed a total of fifteen thousand one hundred, which is in the budget, from CCB Technology Racine, which would be state bid or less. Is there a second?
Oh, I had a question.
Well, we got to do a second.
Okay, I'll, I'll second it.
Go ahead.
Okay, now your question.
I have one, too, but go ahead.
Um, this is going to happen pretty quickly?
It'll be this summer, yeah, I, we got to get delivery and stuff.
Yeah, because we're facing the same problem over at the church, and there's a real lot of lead time in changing everything and for everyone to get on board from the seven to where they were going. So, I would just urge that we do it as quickly as possible. Otherwise, we won't be up and running when they flip the switch, that's all.
Oh, yeah, well, that, no, they flipped the switch sort of like the end of next year. I mean, it's not within too much.
I don't think it's the end of next year.
Well, it's next year, it's not this year.
Early next year.
Yeah, it's next year, so...
Just a word of caution.
Yeah, no, we're aware of that.
You said three computers at fifteen thousand?
Yeah, I was going to say, your motion, it was supposed to be five thousand one hundred.
Oh, five thousand, okay, my mistake.
I thought the idea originally was we were going to buy the one and trade it out.
Well, we were going to, but what happened was...
What happened with that?
We approved a price that didn't exist. They increased the price when we actually did it because we did it too early, and the quote was only good for so many days, and I didn't realize it.
So, what do we expect these to come in at? Because if fifty-one hundred...
Eighteen hundred each?
Yeah, that's seventeen hundred each.
But seventeen hundred each, it could be less.
As opposed to eleven hundred each.
I, I...
But do we know that they're going to work? Since there was some question before about whether they were suitable, which is why we talked about...
Well, these could also be Microsoft, or it could be HP's, whatever, whatever's out there that we're going to look at. Because we got a, this constant changing of prices drives me crazy.
No, I understand that, but my, my, my question revolves around this, the previous sentence here where you said the plan is to try one expensive Lenovo...
Well, that was what we were doing before.
Right, but to see if it meets the town needs, that was the question.
Yeah, that's different.
So, you think this is going to meet the town needs?
Yes.
That's the issue, or at least that's the question.
Yeah, that, that other stuff is replaced with what I just read you.
So, it's fifty-one hundred, basically?
Fifty-one hundred, yeah, my mistake. Is there a second?
There was a, a second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One nay.
Do we know where these three are going to go? Have you decided?
Definitely, one's going to go to the zoning and one to the building because they have the oldest machines that are really slow and dying.
Right, right.
And the third one, we'll have to see who goes.
Okay.
And it's not mine, I'll let somebody else have it. Okay, motion carried. Okay, discussion on local events law?
Well, this is really a procedural issue that I'd like to bring up with the board. Obviously, not getting into the content because we'll do that, well, we did that last Thursday, and we'll do it again a week from Thursday. We do have one set of comments, as Dean pointed out, and that came by email a few days ago. Another one that is supposedly coming shortly, and that's, at least as far as I'm aware, that's all we've gotten to date, or, or expecting to date. What I would like, what I would propose to do would be to sit down with these one or two sets of comments, notes from the meeting, and rework the draft that we looked at before, and obviously, resubmit it to the board, and also send it to Carol and ask her to put it up on the town website. The question is, how much lead time the board would like to have to get a revised draft? Again, keeping in mind that the longer the lead time to get the revised draft, the less time it will be to wait for people to submit their comments, okay? It seems to me that anybody who was at the meeting or watched it on TV or YouTube and is inclined to say something, we'd, we'd want to give them at least a week to say something.
Well, the document is on the webpage as it, as it exists, so they have an idea for comments.
So, I would say, I mean, to me, a reasonable cutoff would be, say, the end of this week. And whatever I have or don't have by the end of this week, I put something together and send it through, and that gives the board and the public four or five days to review it before we meet on Thursday. Does that sound okay? I don't, well, people need more time, or people need less time. I can do it however you would like.
I'm still going to go back to my original comment. You're getting input, but why do we not have a good representative group within this town sitting down and working that input and coming up with something instead of just you?
Well, it's not just me.
Well, I'm, I'm not trying to be facetious.
No, no, I understand that.
It's, it's up to you, one single person's ideas and interpretation once it all comes in. I really feel that synergism with a group of individuals from the various, from zoning, from planning, et cetera. We've got some people out here who have voiced some really good comments. You build on that, you come out with a better product.
But isn't that what we did on Thursday? I mean, isn't that the point of the workshops?
What works, I mean, we had, was that a, that's not my idea of a workshop.
Well, no, it wasn't my idea either, but that's the theory behind the workshop, is to have people...
My idea of a workshop is getting a group of people together for the sole persons sitting down and looking at all the input, what we have, exchanging information, ideas, and coming up with the best solution. And that's not what I see. and coming up with the best solution. And that's not what I see.
We haven't done that before in any other local law that we've...
So what?
Well, so, well, wait a second.
Not, not of so what, I'm just making an observation.
We kinda did because...
We haven't done it.
When we had the zoning revision, I mean, that was basically what Nancy's kind of saying, is that we took one person from each...
In a sense, it was.
Representative from each aspect, you know, business owner, realtor, zoning, and, and one of the things that I kind of impressed upon that we really should have input is all stakeholders, and that meant whether it be Adrian's Farm, or one of the other two farms that were doing these wedding venues, to have them have input and be part of sitting at the table and giving their, and, and Stacy seemed like she's very amiable for whatever the law is, she just wants to have it clear. Because for the most part, whatever we wrote in, in that last document, she'd probably qualify anyway, so it's not gonna be to her advantage one way or the other. She just wants to have a clear path to, I'm gonna have a permit, and I'm gonna be done with it, and I know that every year thereafter, I'm gonna be able to renew it, providing I don't hurt somebody in the process. And, and I think she was very amiable, but we never brought her to the table in part of that process of writing that 10-page document. And that's really what the concern was on my part, was that we created this thing without that side of the input.
So at the risk...
Well, no, not, go ahead.
I was gonna say, at the risk of criticizing this entire board, it is on the website, so now everybody can see it now, which is bringing them to the table. And we have had workshops where we invite everyone, and obviously, people showed up to make their comments. I think the problem was on our end, is that we allowed that workshop to really kind of just run amok. We should've started at the beginning of that document, asked for comments on each section as we went along, and made the changes and agreed to things...
Do line by line versus...
Yeah, as we went along. I mean, that whole workshop, people were jumping from the end of it to this section to that section.
That's true.
And there were ideas here and there, and we couldn't, there was no organization to it. And so I think what you're saying is actually true, but we can do that in workshop form and just say at the beginning of the workshop, "All right, at the beginning here, let's take comments on this section, on page one, on, on section one, whatever it is, and we'll work on that." And then we move on as, as the evening goes on, and I think we come up with more...
My objection is, when you do it mostly on the internet, you lose the synergism you need, and you lose the opinions that would matter, that would come to maybe a, not the best, not a good conclusion, but a better conclusion. I, I, I mean, I guess it's my corporate background that says, this is a very effective way to get things done. And you're right, just the forum we had last time isn't gonna solve anything because it's all over the place.
But we have had better success following that procedure in the past.
Yeah, for other zoning revision things.
In a more methodical way, rather than just having it out there, bouncing, people bouncing off the walls, which is what we got last Thursday.
You know, and I think part of the problem was that when you don't have that collaborative collection of thought, and people going back and forth, and then creating the document from that input, when people are coming in, when the document's already drafted, they're coming in in a negative aspect.
But this is how we've always...
They're coming into fight for the whole document versus maybe individually wanting to...
Okay, first, I understand, but, I mean, I think there...
That's not a criticism of you, that's just a criticism of what people generally...
I'm having a problem with the process.
This was a collaborative effort, I want it very clear. There were many people involved in this. The ZBA was involved in this, the planning board was involved in this, obviously. I was involved with this, citizens were involved with it.
Any of the ZBA people complained that they were not a part of it.
Robert Maripoti was involved with this, the town board had option, had, had access to the, to the information. Many people were involved. This was not a one-person operation. That's the first thing you have to understand. This was collaborative in the truest sense of the term, okay? The second thing is that it was out there, I think, within a reasonable amount of time for people to look at it, think about it, go back and look at it a second time if they cared to, and form opinions and conclusions, not simply reacting when they get hit with something as they walk in the door. There was a week lead time. You can read this thing a, a number of times and think about it in a week. So people, and there were people who did, and they came in with constructive and reasoned and thoughtful comments. Obviously, not everybody did, in my estimation, although clearly, that's, that's a matter of opinion. But there were always gonna be people who waited to the last minute and picked something up and said, "I can't deal with this."
I, I understand that.
You know, right? I mean, that's just human nature, that's the way people are. And I, I'm not convinced that having, I have no aversion, you know, to being involved in a, in a, a subcommittee or a task force, or whatever you call it, I'm not convinced, I'm simply not convinced that, other than introducing more time into the process, it's gonna get us to the desired result.
Yeah, I think that process shows, I mean, we did it with the zoning revision, but we're still spending plenty of time going through the zoning revision at this board, picking things apart, so I just think we just started that process.
Well, the, the zoning revision only handled a page and a half.
Yeah.
Aspect, it didn't handle the event side.
Yeah, yeah.
And the event side, it's now added eight more pages to it, so, you know, a lot more...
It's grown.
I would just ask that...
The solar law has added 20 pages, but we're handling that.
Yeah.
We're dealing with that without having the necessity of setting up a special procedure to handle it. We're having workshops, we're having public hearings, people are coming in, speaking, going back, I mean, it's real, I don't see the difference.
Like I said, my, my only comment was that...
I don't see the difference.
I, I, I agree that you probably had input, but it was one-sided, in my opinion, because you didn't get, like I said, like the farm owners or anybody on the other side.
Well, we did, but we did on Thursday.
Well, she, well, on Thursday, but not when you wrote the document.
Fine, okay, well, then we'll do it, but that's why we have a public hearing, and that's why we have a workshop, to get other people's, you know, to get, get opinions from people whom I might not get them from necessarily ahead of time. So I will revise it based on the comments we got at the meeting, either from all sides of the fence, plus whatever comments come in after the meeting, and we'll have a second round, which is what we've done before.
I just have a pro, you know, whatever we do, but I just have a problem with the process. It's a proven fact that a small group of people that are qualified, that are there for a purpose, okay, will ba, will bounce information off each other, ideas and whatever, and you will come out with a consensus. Everyone won't agree, but there will be a consensus that you can put forward. When you do emails, okay, I didn't look at the emails for a week, so therefore I missed my opportunity. I'm using it as an example.
Yeah, I understand.
Somebody, so it's email to you, email to you. If other people look at it, maybe they weigh in, if not, they're still giving you their ideas. Someone has to put this together, and the one person trying to put it all together is not as good as a group of people that agree on something, and a group of qualified people. That's all. I'm talking about a process.
Well, then...
It's not an indictment against you, it's just a process.
Is that what the board wants to do? We'll set up a, if you, if that's what, if that's the preference of the board, we'll set up a special committee or task force?
And I think somebody else from the board should be on it as well.
Or whatever you wanna call it.
You know?
Fine, I mean, but...
I would be in favor of that if we knew that this board wanted an event in Conference Center law at the end of this.
If what?
That at the end of the process, that this board actually wanted this law. There were a lot of philosophical opposition to the law itself, and so going through that entire process only to find out at the end that we're not gonna get the three votes of a consensus of presidents in the town.
No, I, I think, I think we all agree that we need a law.
Okay.
Yeah.
Maybe not this law.
Yeah, that's fine.
But we need a law because right now, as, as was said many times, you said it, I've said it, we all said it.
Running amok.
You can't do it technically.
Yeah.
So it needs to have a law to address it.
Ray, what is, what is the procedure for setting up a, a group of the type Nancy is talking about?
You can do an ad hoc committee anytime you want.
I would also say, having written this, dealing with the solar, when you say a small group, and you include this board, so there's five of us, and then you include the planning board, and the ZBA, and the zoning administrator, just that alone, I know, I know it's not they, it wouldn't all be there.
It doesn't have to be the whole group.
But I'm just saying, that's 20 opinions right there.
Right.
And it gets overwhelmed.
Small group. Again, we did it for four and a half years.
I know, I know, I know you did.
Uh, in the zoning revision, and, and again, we didn't always agree, but we always accepted the, the final result.
Yeah.
Well, this is, this is also a preu, it's prelude to...
Well, should we call it...
Other things that we have that are unresolved. And if we do this right, then when we deal with B and Bs and other things that are on the...
Well, that's true.
Yeah, I'm sort of holding off on that.
It'll make it a whole lot easier.
The zoning revision committee still exists.
Yeah.
Right?
I mean, it hasn't been disbanded. So let's, let's take who, who's active in, in, in pretty much everything that we do as far as the zoning revision. I would say Russ should be on, on the committee, maybe Rich, if he wants to be on the committee, and take, like I said, one of the, you know, the landowners, whether it be Stacy or her daughter, or Naylor Farm, or whoever, and, and certainly you and I, since we've, we've done it on the committee before, that's fine. And then if you wanna select somebody from the zoning and somebody from the planning, and...
That's it.
And then we can come up with a, a group of people.
And I think also open it up to the public, if anybody wants to visit.
Absolutely, always.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not a secret.
Yeah, of course.
The thing is, you're gonna need both Naylor Farm and Adrian's Farm. They're different modes of operation, so you gotta...
No, it's their choice, though.
But, yeah, exactly, I haven't heard anything from Naylor, I mean, they haven't...
No, but I'm just saying, it's two different modes of operation that you gotta be concerned with.
Right, right.
And then you have the guy on Sunset Trail.
Am I asking for something that is not doable? I don't think so.
No, it's just, I mean, obviously, we all know it's gonna add time to when this...
We don't need masses, but we do need...
And we currently have people in violation, and it's just, it's, you know, we have to take that into account.
Yeah, right.
We have people in violation, and this is gonna add more time to the process of us getting them outside of violation.
But I just see, and coming back in another two weeks or whatever, we'll be at the same place we were today. So, and that makes no sense, so.
Well, I, based on what Dean just said, I come up with a list of nine people.
You won't want any more than that.
The two farms, you, me, you said, suggested Richard perhaps, Russell, some, the zoning administrator.
Maybe Ian, if he wants to get involved, because he seems pretty legalese.
Okay, that adds, that, that brings it up to 10. Then we had somebody from the, a representative from the planning board, a representative from the ZBA. So I, and if you add, you know, I think, I, actually, I think Ian would be very good because he's obviously very interested in this, in this topic. So we're up to 10 people.
I would just throw out names, maybe not all 10 wanna do it, but I'm just saying.
Oh, no, I gotta start someplace.
But that's the universe.
But I think those are, that's a good core group of, that we can all sit around and hammer out a reasonable product.
Now, they're gonna have that product by the next meeting.
I don't think we'll have it by the next meeting.
I don't think so.
So I would say in place of the next meeting, maybe we should do it on that night.
I would say for the next meeting, we should go back to the previous schedule with how, how we were going along before we got to this.
Yeah.
I, I like your idea, though, in, in the interest of getting it done faster so that people don't remain in violation, maybe that night is these 10 people invited.
Oh, you mean a, a week from Thursday?
Yeah.
In replace of next Thursday being...
A general workshop.
The general workshop.
And you guys meet at the Masonic Hall and do your thing.
Well, they can do it here.
You can do it here, it doesn't matter, we're, you know, more, more the area.
We own the room.
And the public can come and certainly voice their opinions of anybody else, but it seems like that's the core group who's here most of the time anyway.
We need to work out a mechanism...
You can do it on TV if you want, I don't care.
We need to do, I think it's better not to.
I think we've gotten enough input.
I'd rather say we do it around a table instead of...
Well, I'm just... I think we need a mechan, what's the mechanism for notifying people or asking people if they wanna serve?
You call them up.
That's it.
That's it.
Nothing more official or formal than that.
No.
What I would say is, we have gotten enough input from these public meetings, all right, that we don't need a lot more of that. We need people to take that input now and make something out of it. So you, you don't want more than 10 people.
Yeah, no, for sure. So we will not have a general zoning workshop a week from Thursday?
No.
So that means we go two meetings without...
Do all of us wanna be involved?
Then you have a town board...
Can't have more than three, if you have three or more.
I mean, we can do it as a workshop.
Well, you can have...
And it's scheduled for that, so...
I mean, we can, we can schedule it for another night and have the zoning meeting on Thursday and talk about something else. It doesn't have to be about this, because there are other topics, obviously, that need to be talked about. Remember, we stopped, that was Dean's suggestion, is we stopped where we were, and we sort of went off to the side to talk about this. We could go back to where we were and run this on a parallel track, so we don't lose, we don't lose the time.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that we don't lose time on this.
Right.
Yeah, because what we're talking about is, as I said, you lose the Fourth of July, so, and if you lose the next week, you're, you lost a month, basically, between them until you get together again.
Well, no, okay, I understand. All right, I'm not saying we should not have this meeting until...
The zoning's not going anywhere in a month, okay?
So, I mean, the, the two active people on, on the zoning would be either Chris or John, because they've both, you know, served comments. You know, I don't know if someone from the planning, I don't know if, you know, Art wanted to be involved.
Well, yeah, Paul Thomas is a lot of...
Or, uh...
Paul Thomas has had a lot of input into this.
He has had a lot of input.
Okay, so, and Robert, Maripoti. Okay, so we're talking about June 20th at 7 o'clock, instead of, in lieu of a regular...
Yeah.
Okay.
And then we can come to, hopefully, at, at the end of that night, a, a final product.
Okay.
Or at least close to it.
I'm gonna hold you to that.
So, so the next...
I'm bringing popcorn.
The next zoning revision meeting will be the week after the Fourth.
Fourth of July.
Whatever that is.
Two weeks after the Fourth.
Two weeks.
Yeah.
Should we, should we schedule a special meeting because of the Fourth? So, so we don't lose another, another week or not? Because we're gonna lose two weeks, remember?
Yeah, the 18th, because, you know, we gotta look at whether the Masonic Hall's being used, or this one, or that one, scheduling, just, we'll just say two weeks.
Because there's a long hiatus there.
Well, you got over a month.
Well, it's also a long hiatus for the board as well, that's why I'm saying, if you wanted to have a special meeting.
Maybe we need a summer break.
I'm not ready with that.
All right.
Summer break.
Okay.
Sounds like a point.
Okay, so the next zoning revision will be 18th of July, Thursday, at 7 o'clock here, TV and all that stuff.
And next...
And you're gonna have your own meeting.
Next week, if someone wants to come, they're more than welcome to come, it just won't be the official format that we, we've been going through.
Yeah, not a, not a board meeting. Okay, got that all squared away? The only other comment is, on, and I've said it before, I would like across the top of it...
Yes.
A date.
Yes.
Because we keep getting so many of these things, and I don't know which one is which.
Can it be on the bottom?
No, I want it right on top so I can see it.
All right, I'll put it on the top.
It should be on every page or two.
Well, I don't care about every page, but on the beginning, so I can see it.
All right.
Got it.
I'm writing a note to myself.
Write it, big capital letters.
Big letters, page, date.
There you go.
Okay.
If that's the worst of our problems, we're in good shape.
I, I understand, but I, I wind up with so many of these things that I can't tell which is one. Okay, the next one is resignations and appointments. I make a motion that the town board, well, let me start with over here. As part of the Rec Park Summer Camp Staffing, we will need to establish another Recreation Assistant Position. And, uh, this is the motion that sets it up. I make a motion that the town board approves the following resolution, be it resolved that the town board approves establishing another Recreation Assistant Position. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, this is so we can have two of them. It costs us nothing.
Well, they work at the same ti, oh, so...
The person's already in the resolution to be hired and all, but we just gotta have it. That HR is becoming quite a problem for us to control. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I, motion carried. Now, this is a resolution to change previous resolution, okay? I make a motion that the town board approves the following resolution, be it resolved that the town board approves changing Samantha Smith's wages from $280 per week to $16 per hour effective June 12th, 2019, as Recreation Leader. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, the discussion is, the county wants us to have that as a dollar per hour position rather than a week position. So, we gotta do that to clean up the records. All in favor?
Aye.
I, motion carried.
This, this says 780 to 280 per week.
Yeah, I don't see anything about hour.
He's reading from a different script.
No, no, I'm reading my thing, which is changed.
Today, as Ray was talking to Human Resources, they came back to him today with the fact that it can't be weekly salary, but rather has to be an hourly.
Right.
So, in the light of day, you know, he quickly changed it to approve it to them.
Okay, so, these numbers are...
No, these numbers are...
Just procedural.
All changed.
But the numbers that Ray is using for the hourly wage add up to...
Right, they do, right.
Yeah.
Got it.
The weekly wage.
Or, or a little less, whatever it comes out to be it is. It doesn't exceed the monies allocated for the position.
All right.
Okay, then we have a resolution, I make a resolution that the town board accepts a resignation of Timothy Lawler as Laborer effective six, uh, June 5th, 2019. Is there a second? He's in the Highway Department, just so you know.
I'm sorry to hear that.
All in favor? Aye. Motion carried.
Elliot, did you second that?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, and now, we do the, this resolution here. There was just one minor change. The hours had changed. Instead of being a week. I make a motion that the town board approves the following resolution, be it resolved that the town board approved Resolution Number of 2019, appointing additional seasonal employees. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I, motion carried. Okay, now, we're on the next...
So, there isn't a motion for Sophie Gonzalez.
No, she's on this thing.
She's on that, okay.
Yeah, so, it's, this is very current. This is like within days or half-days. So, that's why it's got very difficult. Okay, warrants.
I make a motion, be, be resolved, the town board approves the June 11th General Fund Warrant Vouchers Number 226 through 268, totaling $44,574.33. And the June 11th Highway Fund Warrant Vouchers 127 through 148, totaling $44,158.46. Is there a second?
Second.
Any... Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion carried. I make a motion that the town board approves the following resolution, be it resolved that the town board approves Resolution Number of 2019, a motion to move funds at the June 11th, 2019 Board Meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I, motion carried. I make a motion that the town board approves the May 2019 Supervisor's Report. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion carried. Okay, now, public discussion. Anything related to the town? Does anyone wanna talk? I'll put, uh, we'll open it up. You ready? Okay, let me open it up. I make a motion to open the meeting to public discussion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion carried. Okay, Chris.
Again, Chris Giuliani, Senate Room. I'd love to be on that committee, being reasonable and trying to find a solution, because I, myself, I'd like to find a solution for the farm over there and see what we can do to try to come up with a reasonable, uh, plan, with my experience being on the zoning revision committee for quite some time, and be able to work, um, with multiple people, which I feel over several years, that we were able to get through quite a bit and have, uh, equal respect among everyone that was on the zoning revision committee. Um, I do applaud Nancy for saying, trying to get involved in here to try to work as a team, to try to find a solution. That's on, what I'll call a bipartisan measure, to try to find a solution in, in the benefit of our community.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Oh, Rich. I'll look at you. I won't forget you.
Rich Morris from Hollow Road. On the solar law, I don't know when it came in, seven acres or 10% of the land, whichever is less. That eliminates putting solar on most properties. Doesn't make it worthwhile, and I don't know when that change took place. Um, it's very expensive, as Ray has pointed out time and time again, and to hook up. It's also very expensive to do the fencing and the visual barriers that are being required. But then, when you take and you eliminate somebody from being allowed to do 10 acres of solar, you're pushing the thing over the brink. I think you've gotta really take a look at that, and I wish I had known that that change had been put in there. I didn't even know, I don't believe it was there last month, was it?
No, it was over the, the discussions with the planning board, and it was on the, in the new version that was online. Thing is, is with seven acres, you'll still get up to about two megawatts, which is very close to the hosting capacity for most of the town.
The, okay, now, I don't know the procedure here, but are there gonna be changes between this month and next month?
And I, I had said earlier that any changes that happen will be on the website within a week. I'm gonna get them done in the next couple of days and get them to Carol.
Okay, I strongly urge that you allow 10 acres and that you get rid of that 10%. The issue is screening, not what percentage of your land you're using, and the screening you have covered very well. There is not a lot of land on three-phase electricity. You know, we, you spoke earlier of land on 9G. There is no land on 9G where if you take 10% of it, it's gonna be feasible to do. So, you've eliminated it, and there isn't three-phase in a lot of areas of the town. So, I would strongly recommend that we take a look at that.
So, you're, you're suggesting just 10 acres flat, flat 10 acres regardless?
I don't understand why you care what percentage of the land it is. I don't understand what, the issue is screening, and we're trying to keep from develop, we're trying to take open land from being developed.
So, the reason that came up is there was a lot of discussion from the planning board about preventing developers from coming in and buying empty lots and just putting in giant solar farms. So, say they bought a 10-acre parcel and put 10 acres of, of solar on it, um, and that was, that was the issue.
Gotcha.
So, we tried to find a happy medium. Now, could those numbers be adjusted a little to find a happier medium?
Okay, so, here again, though, what we're doing is, we're trying to pick what ugly thing might happen and set everything in line to stop it. You can't do that in life. In life, you have to be flexible as a board. When somebody puts up ugly solar panels and doesn't screen them, you quickly, you quickly move, and we, we put forth screening. That's the issue there. I don't believe there is a line of people lined up to buy 10 acres and do that. I, I, I think that that's overreacting, and it, it eliminates it, because there isn't, I keep saying this, and it's very important. There is not a lot of land on three-phase electricity, and you can't have a solar farm unless you have three-phase.
Yeah, the three examples I mentioned are basically the three in town: Pumpkin Lane, Clinton Hollow, and 9G.
Well, 9G, there is, there is no land on 9G.
When I said Clinton Hollow, I sort of meant the whole length of it, yeah.
There's no land on 9G that I know of where you could take 10% of it.
Yeah, you'd end up with two and a half acres of, mostly, yeah.
The only place would be Adrian's Farm.
Adrian's Farm is the only one that I can think of.
It's the only open spot.
And they, it would have to be way up in the back, and they would be, yeah, it would be very expensive for them to do it.
Yeah. We'll make some adjustments to it, and then we'll put a new version online.
Okay. Quick.
Oh, no, you take your time.
You don't have to be quick. I don't wanna do it, so you're gonna have to bear with me. Carol Hughes, I live on 220 Schultz Hill Road. Uh, I live next to an eventual event place now. When I took off the computer, the event thing, is this just all events, or is it just Adrian's Farm and Naylor?
All.
All of them.
Carol, there is something in there you should be aware of. It does not allow event centers on town roads.
Say that again, honey?
State and county roads.
It's the way it's written now.
It's the way it's written now.
And when you say all events...
Schultz, Schultz Hill Road would not be permitted.
Would not be one of those event things. But, uh, how are they able to have events like this? Last two weekends, they've had events there of 20, 30 people, goat yoga classes, um, what else did they have? I think it was Roosevelt High School teams and stuff. They had events up there. I mean, they've had three or four events, and then you got the signs all along the road indicating where the events are gonna take. How are they allowing to do that?
Are these for private use or commercial use?
Pardon?
Are these for private, presumably, these are not for private use.
Apparently not. They're using it as, uh, like the, the goat thing, and I think they were getting $25 per person.
The best thing to do, it's, yeah, the best thing to do is to make a phone call...
To the zoning.
To the zoning officer and say, "By the way, this is what's going on," and he will investigate, as he's done in other cases, and as he is actually doing, because these, these things keep popping up all over town, and whenever we hear about them, we refer to the zoning officer, and he investigates.
All right, because I'm, I'm ignorant to what's going on.
And if it's, if, if it's in violation, he won't get them, he'll sign them and close them down.
I see problems coming down the road with neighbors, okay? I'm retired. I don't need these things. I've got other neighbors that are using their homes, are gonna be retiring and living in their homes. We're putting up with a lot of stuff. You get 20, 30 cars going by, I mean, you know, in, in one day.
Well, that's one, that's what...
Heavy equipment coming in. I mean, I, you know, I don't know what they're doing back there now, but there's heavy equipment there, and they sit the property stuff right on the property. The line is like, okay, we're winning. You know, I, I don't know what's going on with these people.
Well, that's why it's, it's very important, uh, at least to my way of thinking, in the, in the law that's out there now, that, um, they'd be limited, these, these sites be limited to access from, from a state or county road, if we allow them. Not from a town road. That, to me, is very important.
Yeah, well, to me too.
To prevent the kind of thing you're talking about.
Me too, because as I say, you know, I don't need the goat, I mean, it's nice, but...
Well, the current operation is not allowed, yes, that's true. But I think what you need to do, and I know, you know, people, people don't like to complain about their neighbors necessarily, or...
I'm getting there.
Then, call the zoning officer.
All right.
And he will, he will listen, and he will write it down, and he will investigate it, and he'll, he'll deal with it. That's part, that's part, a big part of what the town pays him to do.
But we gotta do it when it's occurring, so that he can visually see something, because he can't trust your word of mouth or somebody else, you know?
Some of the neighbors are taking photographs.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, it's gotta be...
Signs of, you know...
Because I've sent him on several occasions to do things, like that one on, uh, Lauren Lane. That was on a Sunday morning. I got the call, and he was over there by lunchtime, stopping that and taking, and doing something now. He couldn't do everything, because he couldn't get technical support from other organizations, but...
He, basically, he needs eyes and ears.
Yeah.
That's, that's what, uh, you'll have to do then, zoning. Okay, I, I just wish, this is only a personal thing. I just wish neighbors would treat us like neighbors, you know, they're treating us like, you know, different entity totally, you know? And it's, it's a sad thing.
Yeah.
You know, I'm 77. I don't need to put up with this crap, you know? I really don't.
It's a changing town, and that's exactly why we're doing what we're doing.
I hate, sorry, folks, if you're from New York, but, you know, you're coming up, and you're trying to make New York up here, and...
Doesn't work.
Why do it to us, you know?
Okay, thank you, Carol.
Well, thank you for listening to me.
Thank you for being patient and waiting.
Huh? I didn't know if you were even gonna let me talk.
Oh, yeah, we let everybody talk.
Even you.
Who else? Somebody else.
Yeah.
Somebody else was gonna stand up, right?
I try.
Yeah, anybody else? Okay, gotta come up. Now, Rachel, Road, speak into the microphone.
I'm Anne Gales. I live at Schultz Hill Road, and I'm the resident who complained about the sawmill. And I've been sitting here with a real pit in my stomach that it was resolved. I don't understand how it could have been resolved when for 15 months I have been complaining about the noise. I don't understand how a wall is going to eliminate the noise. So, you said that we're...
Wasn't there also an issue about the, the timing, when he would agree to do, not when you were not home, or something to that effect? I remember there was something about...
There hasn't been any agreement on my part about anything.
Well, I'll have to find out then. My, my understanding from, were you here when I, at the beginning, when I read the, yeah? This is what the zoning officer said. If that's not the case, then I need to talk to him about it.
Well...
I was under the impression that you had reached in a, some sort of an accommodation with your neighbor, and that the issue had been... Okay.
Well, Carol...
Okay.
I live down the road from Carol. She can hear it. The man who bought Benaway's house, he can hear it. And I'm right across this road. And I bought here 30 years ago, because I'm a farm girl, and I want it to be in a rural community. And the Town of Clinton zoning ordinance reads that a home business is allowed as long as there is no disturbance. Well, a wall is gonna be put up?
Well, that was for visual...
Isn't there gonna be a visual disturbance besides the auditory disturbance?
Have you been in touch with the zoning officer recently?
Oh, my God, don't get me started.
I did ask him to come out and see you.
15...
Did he?
Months I have been fighting this.
Right, but we've had several zoning officers during that period of time. I'm interested in recently, the one we have now.
Maripodee.
Right, have you been in touch with the one we have in office now?
Oh, yes.
As opposed to the one from before?
I believe it was 10 days ago.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, he was there.
And he basically...
Yeah.
Told me that it was gonna be expensive, and the town didn't have a lot of funds. It was gonna take a long time, and that the, the people were doing it because they needed extra income.
Okay, all right. I will investigate that, find out what's going on. You're very welcome.
Anyone else? Okay, whoever that is.
Brennan.
Oh, yeah, Brennan. You're hiding behind Chris.
Good evening. So, I just wanted to...
Tell everybody who you are.
Brennan Carney, you're Dutchess County Legislature. One I wanted, and I'm sure you mentioned this at the beginning of your meeting, to offer my condolences to the community and family of, um, Tim McCormick. Did you all talk about, yeah?
Yes, we had a moment of silence even.
We had a moment of silence last night, um, in the legislature, um, and, uh, County Executive Marcus Melinaro has ordered, um, flags at half-mast, and now, it's in my phone, um, one of the departments that he has the authority to do that in, in honor of him. So, I wanted to let the community know that.
We did that, too.
Good. Last night in the legislature, um, with a very close vote, um, salary raises were approved, um, for the county executive, the county sheriff, the county comptroller, and the county clerk, as well as legislators, 3% raises. Um, I voted no. Um, there were a lot of opinions on both sides and good arguments on both sides. I think that, uh, we needed more information and a better comparison and sort of a better, uh, understanding of the thought process behind those raises. Um, I also have a concern that, um, the, at, at the upper end of the range in Dutchess County, the, um, the executive, the, the clerk, the sheriff make, uh, nearly twice the median income, um, of households in Dutchess County. So, my vote was no. Um, please let me know what you think. If you have thoughts or comments, I'd welcome them.
We can't change it, can we?
Nope.
Okay, so...
Not this time. It may come up again, um, but no, you can't. But I'm, again, I'm here to tell you, you know, what I did as, as the representative.
I just wanted to clarify, you know?
When will the amendment be published?
Um, you mean, when, when will it take effect?
Well, that as well, but when, when will the notification be posted?
Everybody's, it, it was in the newspaper today. I mean, it's, it's, it's on the, it's on the county website. You can read the whole resolution. Um, and I, I'm sorry, but I am not positive when it takes effect.
It's probably...
I think it's 2020, um, starting, and then it, it, there's a, there's a schedule of, of which years it continues in. Um, and then the only other thing that I've really been, well, I've been working on a bunch of things, but the other bigger thing I, I worked on, and this, I think, is very relevant to Clinton, um, although it's a state issue. I was in Albany, um, last week lobbying for, um, New York State guidelines for small water source testing. Um, testing of, uh, water sources that serve less than 10,000 people are not required to test for PFOAs and other contaminants. Um, and I think that's something that, uh, we need in Dutchess County. Um, another thing that will be coming up and that I will be advocating for that is very specific, I think, to Clinton, um, would be point-of-sale well testing. Um, that would mean that when a house changes hands, the well is tested. Um, and the rationale behind something like that is that it creates a pool of data that could indicate if there's a contamination source that a community needs to be aware of, um, and needs to do something about. So, that will be coming up, um, in the New York State Legislature. And again, I don't control that body. I don't control the one here either, but I will be advocating for that for our community to keep folks safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? I mean, you seen none then? Let me get my squirting here. I make a motion to return to regular order of business. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion carried. Any more business before the town?
No.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion carried. Thank you all. See you in another month for the regular town board meeting.